I'm not sure if I can disable that link. We'll try. Let me see.
You're in the wrong room, Dan.
How do I delete this? One second while I delete this, let's see. Hopefully, I've just deleted it completely.
No, you got like... There's like sixty-something people in the Teams call. You got... You can't... Yeah, you gotta...
Hold on. Alright, let me see.
What you gotta do, Brandon, you gotta end the meeting. Go, you log into the Teams call and end that meeting.
Alright, hold on one second, let me uh stop sharing.
And tell everybody else, no, you log into the Teams call and then you, you tell everyone this meeting has ended and you can just end it, just log off of it.
Alright, I'm going now, hang on one second.
And they'll be forced to come into this call.
I have to find the uh Teams link now. I thought when I deleted it, it ended. Give me one second.
No, you, I don't think that's gonna work.
Alright.
You just gotta go into the, it should be in your calendar. If you go into Teams, that meeting should still be running.
Yeah, that's where I deleted it out. Let me get it back.
Seven, thirty minutes.
Here you go.
Joey, you in our meeting?
No, I can't get, I can't get in, what do you call the chambers, it's locked, so now I'm heading down to clerk's office.
Oh, okay. Oh, alright.
It's not locked in chambers, and nobody goes there, dog.
Hmm.
So.
There you go.
I'm heading down to clerk's office, I'm gonna walk on there from clerk's office.
Oh, okay, alright.
Alright, thanks for your help.
Okay, it looks like we've had a lot more people join as opposed to the Teams meeting now. Are there still people in the Teams meeting?
Who's um posting the Teams meeting?
I'm creating a Zoom link and for some reason with the calendar, a Zoom, a Teams link is somehow created at the bottom automatically and I have to continuously delete it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Brandon, Brandon Cruz, just so that you are aware, the link on the City website is actually functioning.
Okay.
That one is correct.
Okay, so the link at the City website is correct, alright.
Yes, yes.
Yes, 'cause I'm on it, that's the one I logged into.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm having difficulty with eliminating this Zoom link that pops up out of nowhere but I thought that when I, I did update the invite that I did send out to just reflect the Zoom, the Zoom link as opposed to the uh Teams link. I'm not sure why that continues to show. Nonetheless, we are, most of us are here, correct?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and we have five thirty-five. Um, Mr. Collogi, are you on the call?
I am.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, I will say now, I did receive, I did receive a call from Councilwoman Wilkins. She will not be able to make it due to a family emergency.
Oh ho ho.
So, uh, uh, excuse me, uh, Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Uh, um, so, uh, who's absent from the call as we know at this moment, so it's kinda...
As we know at this, as we know at this moment, the uh Council President has uh made clear she would not be at this meeting and Ms. Sonia Wilkins will not be present due to a uh family emergency. Those are the ones that I know of. Um, I can call a, if, if we'll begin the meeting, I can start, I can call for a roll call.
Yeah, so Council President McBride is not in attendance and Councilwoman Wilkins is not in attendance. Okay, yeah, I, we gotta make sure that we have a quorum, right?
Four is a quorum.
And that's what I intend to do now, so hold on one moment. I'm gonna share, I'm gonna share my screen again and we will go through our regular process, one moment, please.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and I'm, I'm having some technical difficulty over here, Mr. Garcia. I don't know what's going on.
With?
But, yeah, take a roll call, uh, you know, I don't know, I'll fix it, I'll see if I can fix it on my end.
Oh ho.
Okay.
I bet she ducks off the call.
Alright, in the meantime, let's go ahead and call, uh, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, or at least, let's check for a quorum. Um, I'll go through the roll, Ms. Caldwell Wilson.
Present.
Mr. Harrison. Mr. Harrison is in route, is, is present, he is in route to my office to, well, going to the call, Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn.
Present.
Harrison present.
Mr. Harrison's present. He will be momentarily, uh, Ms. Wilkins, I know is absent, Mr. McBride, I know is absent. That will give us four, uh, to the, to the solicitor.
Did you do, Mr. Michelle? Did you do, Mr. Michelle?
I did get, I do have Mr. Michelle.
Okay, I didn't hear you call his name.
I know, I called Mr. Michelle, he said he was present.
Okay.
Okay.
So, uh...
What I will do is I will situate Mr. Harrison, short, uh, and, and take a short moment to situate Mr. Harrison. He was in my office, he wanted to be in council chambers but they're not open, uh, so I will situate him moment, moment, and then we will start momentarily.
Uh, hi, just wanted to let you know, uh, Evelyn Martinez is also on the call.
Thank you.
From Jones.
Okay, uh, excuse me, now I'll go through the, um... I'm gonna go through the rest of the roll as well. Mr. Collogi, you're present, I take it?
I am.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
I'm Mr. Garcia, my apologies, I am present, good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Colin Cherry.
Present, good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Liston?
I'm present.
Thank you. Mr. Bridges, I understand Mr. Bridges has a previous engagement, correct?
Sally Samuel on behalf of Director Bridges.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wilson, Steve Wilson?
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Mr. Douglas? Moving on, Mr. Daniels?
Present. Good evening.
Thank you. Dr. Lopez, I understand will be, uh, who is, is unable to be here today. Mr. O'Nateri. Mr. O'Nateri? No.
Uh, Mr. O'Nateri is in the process of trying to log in, he's also cannot, he's not connecting.
Understood. Ms. Richardson?
Good evening, I am present.
Thank you. Mr. Wattenberg?
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Zelinski?
Present.
Thank you. Okay. If you are, hold one moment, I will situate Mr. Harrison and we will be all set, thank you.
They've actually got to elect a temporary president to run the meeting, because there is no vice president. Eh, Robin is holding again, eh?
What is going on? Mr. Garcia? Hello?
Yes, yes.
What's going on?
I'm just situating Mr. Harrison within my office to...
When you have the public, when you have the public on the line and...
I'm gonna have him crawl in, I'm giving him the number now, I'm gonna have him crawl in.
Responsibility right down into the public in this call.
Understood, understood, Councilwoman, uh...
Would y'all have a quorum?
Trying to get, getting some here. Be one.
Well, Mr. Harrison should not depend on the clerk to have to set him up. That's not Mr. Garcia's role.
Actually, it probably is.
Alright, Mr. Harrison's going to call in right now. He has the number ID and passcode and once he calls in, we will have a quorum.
Well, you should have a quorum anyway, right?
Uh, one, two, I count, one, two, three, Ms., Ms. Wilson, Ms. Caldwell Wilson, Mr. Michelle, Ms. Vaughn. Without, without Mr. Harrison, I don't see a quorum.
I'm sorry, there's, so there's two missing, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Hi, how you doing? This has been happening, I don't know, I think it's the Chinese questions, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harrison, noted as present. Okay, uh, give me one moment, I'm going to share my screen again here so that we have the, uh, so we're able to view the agenda and eventually the docket. Can everybody see my screen? Can everybody see the agenda? Can anybody see the agenda?
Yeah, I can see the agenda.
Mr. Harrison, Mr. Garcia, recording this? I will start the recording as well, hold on, hold on.
Uh, Mr. Garcia, I will say, I will say to you that you took the roll call and the recording wasn't rolling, so when we have a transcript of this, the roll call will be missing.
Can we recount the roll? One second here while I try and get back to...
So, where, where was this meeting that Robin had? Do you know?
Which I'm not sure why I can't.
Oh, gosh. Anyway, I mean, so, just like, yeah, we had a neighborhood meeting, it, it's a small thing, but it's a nice thing. So, our new...
Recording in progress.
I will retake roll. Now that we're recording, I'm gonna retake roll. Ms. Caldwell Wilson.
Present.
Mr. Harrison. Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Ms. Vaughn.
Present.
Ms. Wilkins, absent. This is, uh, for the rec, for the record, for the recorded record, Ms. Wilkins has called in informing that she had a family emergency. Mr. McBride has noticed that she will not be present, I have Mr. Collogi present, I believe we've gone through the departments, um, and I have them noted, I have them noted here as to who's present and not, uh, shall I, uh, shall I do that as well, go through those as well for the record, recorded record?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Cruz? Uh, good evening, President. Mr. Cherry?
I'm present, good evening.
Mr. Liston?
Yeah, I mean...
Mr. Bridges, uh, Sally Sanders, I know it's from his birth, Mr. Bridges, Mrs. Sanders are here?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas. Moving on, Mr. Daniels.
Present, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Lopez, and Mr. O'Nateri. Present, good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson.
I am still present.
Thank you. Mr. Wattenberg. Ms. Zelinski. Okay. Okay. Okay, moving on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Ms. Martinez is also present.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Yeah, there's, there's a good vibe, I think, the young, I'm talking about...
Who's Ms. Martinez?
They're coming in and they wanna make it downtown.
I'm not exactly sure who Ms. Martinez is.
Who's Ms. Martinez?
Hi, Evelyn Martinez, owner of John Lick and Thor, ADR, LLC.
Understood. Can everybody see my screen from the, from the agenda again?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you, just wanna make sure.
So, um, I don't, uh, 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 Mr. Garcia, just trying to keep an eye on, uh, so, what is the number, so we have four council members present here today.
Right.
Uh, and there, and, you know, I could have some technical difficulty, I don't know, uh, Xfinity has been acting up on my end but, um, I'm gonna try to get through this, so how many, uh, what are the, what are the numbers, does it need me as far as, uh, majority vote and, um, okay, I just wanna know. Is it, is it three-one, majority?
No, Ms. Vaughn, I can answer that, we've reconsidered, because the statute utilizes the verbiage, all the members of council, as those are ordinance, you need four votes to pass a motion, to pass a resolution, or to pass an ordinance. It still stays to four votes, notwithstanding the fact that there's a vacancy, and notwithstanding the fact that we have four present today.
Well, it's just like, I mean, what actually needs to be put forward for November, December, that's...
So, everything, so everything, okay, I got you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, I'll move on to the statement. At a good notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Public Meeting Act pursuant to the Public Clause nineteen seventy-five, chapter two-three-one, this agenda is completely extended on. It was sent to the Trend Times, posted on the first world forum ordinance involved, and filed in certain clerk's office, will actually be taken.
Mr. Garcia, don't we have technical, somebody to Robin's meeting?
I'm getting there, yes. I'm getting there. I've called a roll and yes, that is, uh, yes, that is the next order of business. It's for the council to, uh, to, to decide who will be the presiding chair of this meeting. Are there any nominations?
Yes, Brandon, I put, uh, Councilwoman Michelle, Mr. Harris, to take over the presidency for tonight.
I have a motion for Mr. Harrison, is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion and second, and I'll go through the roll for Mr. Harrison to preside over the meeting. Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison? Yes, I, I can hear you, yes. Mr. Harrison, I'm having trouble hearing you over the, uh, over the recording though. I can only hear you because you're in the next...
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Good, okay, good, because, um...
Okay, I have a three-two, I have three to one. Mr. Collogi?
Yeah, this is, uh, the procedure, a motion to change someone for to perform ministerial acts, so, as far as some concerns, that's just what we proceed.
Understood. Okay, Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison, the, uh, our presiding official of this meeting, or presiding chair of this meeting, um, I have the docket up and if you're, uh, able to see your file along with me, uh, if you want to, the, uh... Next order of business, which I'm... Want to move to, which are ordinances.
Don't we have to approve the, uh, communications and the...
Is there a motion to approve the positions and communications?
Tell them.
Thank you.
Check it.
Motion's second, is there, of a roll, Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yeah.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn? I believe we've lost Ms. Vaughn.
That's hilarious.
This is a listener, it looks like we have three now. Mr. Collogi?
Uh, this is a non, I mean, this is a substantive issue, so as I said, and I'm reading right from our rules, it says that even a motion require a majority vote of all of the members, which Attorney General's opinion, we've been working on, would constitute four people. So, technically, it has not been approved, it doesn't point.
It's Ms. Vaughn on the line.
Ms. Vaughn, she's having some technical difficulty. Uh, she may have dropped off at the line.
We can't proceed without her.
Correct, and I can't see her here.
So, market down, as these have not been approved, we could revisit it later by way of reconsideration, council's desirous to do that, but as of right now, has not been approved.
First of all, and, uh, communications, I'm gonna prove, I will, uh, I don't believe we're able to move any further, and you're just in the, uh, docket at this time, are we?
No, we're not.
They can call in with her phone, the internet may be down, but her phone's still on. Not sure who that was.
Not a council person.
This is ridiculous.
Alright, with that being the case then, uh, Mr. Collogi, is there a timeline, must wait, or if Ms. Vaughn is unreachable, then, then we don't have a quorum, must we, uh, must I end this meeting?
Well, we have a quorum, let's, uh, let me give this a couple minutes, this is an ordinary occurrence, we're gonna have to take a look at, uh, some documentation and some law here. Hopefully, Ms. Vaughn, just suffering a technical difficulty, and we'll pick back up, I suggest, Mr. Collogi, maybe try reaching out her cell phone?
Certainly. I'll go ahead and do so now, I'm gonna be myself, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you can't fire her, it's as such, yeah.
So, Mr. Collogi, we can't even pass ordinance, right?
Yeah, we, we can't pass resolutions.
There's some ordinance that you're part of, my...
Yeah, well, we're forgetting, oh, I'm worried about this passing regular ordinance, and this would require four, and resolutions would require four.
Okay, so at the present time, I have, I have attempted to contact this one, I did get her voicemail, her voicemail is full. Um, I'll shoot her a text as well, and that's the most that I can do in terms of tough communication.
This is sabotage in this meeting, this is incredible.
Oh, God. Oh, no, she was wonderful, this is all people, they know the dog, she loves people, she's not crazy about the dog. I mean, she's fine, she is fine, but she's...
Okay, I sent a text, I'll wait for a response.
Okay, we'll talk about that later.
I sent a text, I will wait, wait for a response.
In terms of talking to Kristen, I was gonna get together with Doug next Tuesday, but I can't because I have my... So, um, it's kind of crazy.
Mr. Collogi, any, uh, specific, uh, predetermined period that I need to wait this morning?
Our rules don't address what happens to the quorum. Initially, there, but it's walls, so I'm digging, I have my computer in the book as we speak. So, if we can give it a couple of minutes, I'll try to give you whatever I have.
Certainly. Councilman Michelle? Is our attorney on? For an opinion?
Mr. Collogi, just in every...
Our attorney?
Mr. Daniels on? Mr. Daniels on?
Ms. Sanders, I believe, is on the board, as well.
Yeah, I, I, I'm here, um, but like, Mr. Collogi, I, I, I don't see this addressed in the rules either, and so, it, I would have to look it up. This is not something that has happened before, so I don't know, unfortunately, so I do apologize for that.
Are we, we trying to look it up, that we have two attorneys here? We don't, I'm on the computer, we're in the book as we speak, it's just, I just wish it was one basic concern, two, and get the answer, it doesn't, it doesn't go like that, I'm doing my best to try to come up with an answer, uh, just one back momentarily.
Thank you.
No problem, sir.
So, then she asked a question about, oh, is there going to be a majority, is a majority vote on any issue? So then she asked the question about, oh, is there going to be a majority? Is a majority vote on any issue three one? And then Cologie said, we've researched this. No, it's the majority.
Mr. Garcia, did you go in the time that Ms. Vaughn went off the, uh?
Irrespective of who is here and irrespective of.
Uh, I did not, I did not note the time, but the recording will, will, will assist me in that. I'm also currently looking for a, uh, for an answer to the question in there.
Now, I gave you more peppers and less.
Thank you.
There's a couple of other pages of, uh, of this now. We'll have to work out.
Councilman, I can hear you in the next room, but I can't hear you on the recording. Uh, same as before. Mr. Cologie, can you hear me? Yes, I can. Okay. Uh, could you, could you give, um, uh, text Ms. Vaughn the telephone number so she can, uh, call? Uh, certainly. I believe she has it in her, um, in her email. I'm just unable to reach her by either at the moment.
So, 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 um, Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Through the chair, Mr. Harris. Um, this is wasting a public's time. We have eighty-six participants on this meeting. And, you know, it's, it's just starting to show more confidence that we take all of this as personal. And, and maybe Ms. Vaughn didn't want Mr. Harrison to run the meeting, but it's not about Mr. Harrison. It's not about Ms. Vaughn. It's about taking care of the, the, the city, and I personally don't want to waste the public's time by us sitting here waiting for Ms. Vaughn to probably have a back on the pole.
Ms. Corvall, I totally agree with what you just said. Okay, I did a day. It's not about us. It's about the public. Okay, I'll take directions from either attorney when they've reached, uh, some type of a definitive answer as to how long we need.
You know, this is, this is Mr. Cologie. All I can say is, of course, the general rule is you have to proceed with the quorum. We've got a unique situation here. We had a quorum, and now we have lost the quorum. So I'm looking to see if there is anything that gives counsel the ability, if it chooses to proceed with less than a quorum. Um, if you want to give me a few minutes, I'll continue my search. Like I said, it seems to be a, a not very common and a bit of an unusual question. That's why I'm not, something's not jumping out at me at the moment. If you want to give me a few minutes to do it, or otherwise counsel can take what will be considered the safe road and deem the meeting concluded because we no longer have a quorum to proceed if we wouldn't want to face any legal challenges on anything that is done without a quorum, unless we have absolute law in our favor, which at this point, we do not know.
Okay.
Mr. Cologie, do you think a welfare check from the police department would be in order? She did look a little sickly. I don't want her to be laying on the floor there. Uh, something happening to her.
Who's that? Who's that?
I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson. This is Phil. Phil Gonzalez from the state.
Oh, oh, right, right. You mean, Mr. Gonzalez, did you hear? You mean Ms. Vaughn, sir?
Yes.
Uh, certainly, I mean, you know, that doesn't fall in the favor of the.
It's the record. Can we continue to reach out to Ms. Vaughn first before we, uh, so we can try to continue the meeting? Provided I don't have any, you know, press. Mr. Harris. Harris is on your. President. Yes, 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 uh, yes, uh, Mr. Michelle. Yes, uh. Director Wilson, are you monitoring? Uh, I know you're on, uh, maybe we can have a unit to respond over to Ms. Vaughn's location, her house, and check on her well-being. Yes, we can do that, but I don't have her. I don't have her address. She was cheating. Never get me her address. I'll have to get that. I think, uh, we can ratchet and head over that, in that direction to clarify if she's, uh, okay, or if she's not going to be on the meeting.
She's at the corner of Simon's Nail Press, across from the Green Store.
You can't say that. You really can't say that.
Thank you, Director Wilson. I appreciate that. My question is, are we going to, uh, put the public through that, through that weight at this time? Well, we're still waiting on direction from either attorney, so.
Yeah, I mean, I can just report back at the moment that the general rule is that you need to proceed with the quorum. There's nothing that's jumping out in the statutes and our codes or our legislative and Robert's rules to address what happens. If you had a quorum and lost the quorum. And my explanation has to be that the meeting does not go forward because let's say, for example, we did have a quorum, and we had four people, and let's say three of them left. If we allowed it to proceed just because we had a quorum and lost it, that means one person could essentially define everything that was going to occur thereafter, and, uh, uh, under our rules, it would be a little bit difficult because we have voted for, but under other governmental, uh, entity situations, you can just understand what I'm saying, that it, it could really get, you know, to an absurd level, so I don't believe they ever intend you to be able to proceed with a meeting unless you maintain the quorum. So in the absence of anything that's telling me it's okay to go ahead, my safest advice would be we have to end the meeting and reabroadize for a new meeting on another day.
Okay.
Only the things acted upon while the quorum is in effect would be valid, and anything that was brought up, once the lack of a quorum occurred, would not be valid.
So, Mr. Cologie, so that's two special meetings for a council meeting, and now a council meeting. What is going on here? This is ridiculous. Public, public, I think, to do her job. If, if the, if the direction is, if the direction is, I see the hand raised. If the direction is then meeting due to lack, due to lack of quorum, then, and, uh, both individuals agree, then that's exactly what I'll do now. Is there anything else? Yeah, I think.
Thank you.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Cologie, I think you should read Rule Four into the, uh, record. Um, that should go according to ten, within thirty minutes after the hour annoyed by the B, and the council president or the opposite of this clerk, they thereupon adjourn the meeting until the next day, unless by unanimous agreement, those members present select another day. The names of the members present in their action at such meeting shall be recorded in minutes by the clerk. Adjourned meetings, and adjourned meetings shall be considered a continuation of the preceding meeting, and the business of council shall be resumed where it is left at the last adjournment.
I, I totally agree that that's what our rules say. The problem with it is that I believe this lies in the phrase of the open public meetings act advertising requirement. If we are ending a meeting today, and we are going to commence, whether it's a continuation of the meeting or meeting on a different day, I believe that it has to be reabroadized. Notice has to be re-given out to the public.
The members, the members can make that agreement, though. The members can make an agreement. There are very important issues. One of them is fire breathing or apparatus, which the fire department desperately needs. Um, and it's a shame that the other council members don't feel that there's any importance to, uh, the agenda that's listed here. Okay.
I cer- I certainly am not disagreeing with the importance of anything on the agenda. I just believe it would be a sunshine law violation.
Well, they can set it, they can set it, they can, they can set it. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to impose, but, and humbly, humbly imposing, if, if that's the case, and those people outside of anything else, is there an agreement to a separate date?
I, I, I actually, I actually, to Sally Samuel, I actually am looking at something, articles related to the open public meetings act, and it talks about if, if a meeting has been advertised, and the, uh, and the majority of members fail to attend, that, that meeting can take place, it can continue to take place with no formal action can be taken. That's what I'm reading here. So, I mean, like, the meeting doesn't have to end. Those who are attending can discuss the items on the agenda, but they wouldn't be able to take formal action based on what I'm reading here. Um, and so.
Do I turn it up on your laptop?
Okay.
No, it's something.
Okay, so, um, counter present. So I'm, I'm very confused here. Um. In one hand, we're saying we can postpone this meeting, but we can't have it tomorrow, or set it up tomorrow, because first of all, we don't have a quorum to vote on doing that tomorrow. Um, so. What do we do? I mean, you have two members missing, one member decided to shut down. Publicity is okay. Um, but I think that, I think if we cannot get in touch with her, please don't go there, mind that we need to, we need to shut this meeting down. Um, I think, I think that while we're waiting to hear from Ms. Vaughn or from the police department, we could move to public comment and just let the public say whatever they have to say. Because that's not a voting thing.
Exactly. I agree with that.
Well, the problem is that the meeting is still ongoing. If Samuel can see anything there about the loss of a.
But that's part of the meeting. The public comment is part of the meeting.
No, no, I understand that, but technically, if it's not about the meeting, then there wouldn't be any public comment. But let me, let me just take a look at.
Well, the public comment is not necessarily about the agenda.